Rest.
Okay. Special meeting of the irrigation committee Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And how do we do real call?
I can do it, or you want to do it, Elizabeth? Okay, you do it, honey.
All right, member Todd?
Here.
Member Sutton?
Here.
Uh, member McKay?
Here.
Member Duarte?
Here.
Uh, member Threkel? And member Griffiths?
Yeah.
And then today for staff, we've got, uh, operations manager, Adam Brown. Um, water resource manager Alexis Elliott will be joining us. General manager, uh, Nicholas Schneider and myself, Elizabeth Olsen as executive assistant.
What do we?
Oh, sorry.
Last but not least.
Our liaison director, Stephen.
Last but not.
And our liaison, Andrew.
Okay, I guess we start out with the pledge of allegiance.
What happened when you're sitting next to you?
Hold it, hold it.
Hold it. Like, we need another chair.
Right here, we'll just move this.
Hold it, squeeze in.
It's cuddle day.
Hold down now. There you go.
Come on down, Bill.
Why don't you sit over there and then I'll take this one here.
Want to hear me, you're one with the gabbling?
Now we can't talk about it.
We got a full singing house today.
Yeah, come over here, I was like, wow, man, what happened?
This meeting is special because everyone's here.
Okay.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republicans' stand, petition, and allow any political with the pay of justice.
Okay.
Two things, I guess.
So, um. Have a motion to adopt the agenda.
We move. It's a move.
In the second, we move in second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Is it noise or nays?
Pardon me?
Is it, is the correct term noise or nays? I noticed in here it wasn't only both.
I have no idea and don't particularly care.
Okay, so is this a typo? We could get that. So just check for a tick. No, we don't. Those are, that's a, any kind of typos like that, we don't have to make any kind of announcement. We just, uh, say there's some typos. Thank you, good catch though.
Okay. That's all in favor. Oh, yeah. All in favor of adopting the agenda as?
All right, I know.
I, we opposed. Okay. You've adopted the agenda as submitted, uh, public forum. And we'd like to speak at the.
So let's say the minutes.
Rule of minutes from? When was the last time?
July. Put this over.
Okay, so that is, it is April twentieth?
July twentieth. Okay, wait.
Oh, this must be the, of a copy of.
So you want the agenda, it's the page two of the today's agenda.
It's the.
This is it, but it's only got.
Oh, you got the wrong data set. Right there.
Oh, wait, here it is.
Oh, okay.
Rule of minutes, July twentieth? Twenty twenty-three?
We will adjust the, I'm, I'm sure it's a conglomeration of the word no and nay. And so it should be nays, and we'll, we'll adjust that spell.
Oh.
So, uh, no, noise, N-O-Y-E-S.
I was curious about that because I saw that, uh, sim- similar thing at another meeting.
Yeah, I think it's been those.
So, okay, still, yeah. Well, not that it's a big deal, anyway. And, um. I forget where we are, did we approve the minutes?
We have to move it.
Okay, um. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July twentieth?
Oh, wait, we.
You mean first. Oh, my, I moved, I know we approved the minutes.
And second. Moved in second to approve the minutes on July twentieth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Okay. Infonational reports, I guess, is where we're at. Or do we actually say anything about that?
So you got, we can turn it over to Adam and Alexis for both the wa- operations and water researcher pull up. We done together. And I think Adam would just do a quick update on the operation.
Okay, so we are, we have no, no, no public forum.
We already did that.
Already did, and so there's, no one, no one wanted to do it.
Okay.
I'm gonna go first, I'm gonna first. Um, to the operation report, um, somewhere to the, to the, um, morning meeting. I think the biggest irrigation related is, um, obviously we have still another about, another month and a half, a season to go. Uh, and so we're working down here, man, a lot of progress throughout the, the season to get the canals cleared up. And, and we're kind of finally getting in on it. Um, we have a lot of work to do, um, up country this next month and a half or so. But it's not really going to impact irrigation season. And after that, we have some more, some more work up, which we'll, we'll be doing as well. But overall, as, um, Alexis probably talked to me, was like, overall capacity wise, uh, the reservoirs at nearly ninety-one, ninety-two percent. Almost a hundred point percent of capacity for this time of year. So we're, you know, looking good for this year, um, and most likely next year. Overall, you know, the reservoirs filled up. Not, not less than fifteen times since it's, since its construction. And this is one of the highest years and you've been going in this period. So, um, we're looking good moving forward.
And I think Alexis has a, a weather update for us.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I really just want to highlight that, you know, we're, we're almost, uh, with the same amount of rainfall as kind of all last year, and we've still got four months to go. Um, and then, you know, no one's projecting that we're gonna have a pretty good winter. And we're already almost full, so it's looking good.
And your wat- the water year that you used here is the calendar year?
No, it goes what from September thirty.
So California water year is September, is it, is it October first to September third?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so we're in September.
Oh, my, I'm sorry, rainfall is actually just the calendar year.
But when we look at water years, it does go October first to September thirty. I think the big story is that we are expecting a considerable portion of rain this season. So that's both good and bad, obviously, with the recent fires. With.
Hello, how are you?
With the recent fires, uh, that does create a bit of a, an issue. And so it's still something we're working together. Hopefully it won't interrupt anything with irrigation season, um, but it is good news for the district overall. Just, it's a big takeaway.
So what would cut, like mudslides or something like that would crush the canals or?
Also, I, I don't think it's gonna be so much like big mudslides. I think it's the, the constant sloughing.
Oh, yeah.
Though our guys are gonna be busy this winter.
Yeah.
There's no trees up there, everything has been cut. Um, so SPI and the Forest Service has fully cut all the trees down that were in the areas of the burn. Um, so right now, there's really nothing to hold the hillside in place.
No.
So that is, that is the issue that we're looking at.
They haven't, they haven't learned it's seeding or something?
No. They haven't got the stem about that.
That's almost like stupid.
Well, they're.
Get a little, get some grass or something coming up.
Yeah, I think they're gonna do some cuts and they're, they're still working on some stuff. They have to do some end of, end of season, uh, work. So they're not done yet, but as of right now, there's not anything that they have done.
There's actually a surprising amount of vegetation up there too, from their current, their, um, rain we had a couple weeks ago. And then soil heated up and actually a lot of stuff sprouted since then.
Well, that's good, yeah. If you get an early rain, that'll come too, because, I mean, you know, that's part of managing your land.
Yeah.
Of course, it's probably blackberries. In fact, today, the blackberries are dropping.
It's just got some roots.
Yeah, that's true. And one thing I wanted to add, and to bring up is, uh, when we had the report that some of the water, irrigation water that was sold this year was overflowed. It wasn't. You said it was coming out of the, of Stumpy on the overflow, not?
Well, I mean, Stumpy was spilling began here.
Yes, yes. Instead of it being like we're pulling down, because that's always the big thing, that irrigation pulls down so much water. Where reality this year was, we were getting it on the overflow, not pulling down the lake itself.
Yeah, there was, it definitely spilled until, uh, June. I believe.
The actual, it'll be in July.
So I just wanted to get that put out here in the record.
Yeah, I mean, normally you're, you know, if we had a, if we were starting May, we would get the snow moving in too, but yeah, sorry. But yeah.
What is that right there?
All for it. Not the whole package, that's why, no. Sorry.
That's the one thing I need.
Your only thought.
Did it say we almost started this spill? That's something, oh, the, yeah, the June?
Yeah, it's around in June, July. You know, I mean, the July, we begin frost filling, but. But it ate. And that's right. That seems to remember that.
Since July.
We had that in the meeting, it was one of the reports.
I think it's into July, because your, your record here says that it's in July twenty-third, it barely is where the lines are going down. So I think it's beginning of July.
Yeah, it's the season.
The, where it stops spilling. It's, our spill expert should know. I know, you, you kind of got it today in the.
I know, I'm sure. Check Facebook.
I think what's abnormal is that once it stopped, it's gone really slowly. Like, stops spilling, it drops pretty quick. And this year it just hasn't, and it's, you know, it's because this additional groundwater in, in the system is in the watershed. Or maybe because there's less sea fish in the ditch. Yeah, well, that wouldn't really, yes, yeah. Yeah, um, yeah.
We also think there was some, some, there was some snowpack that may have been hiding up in the top parts of the watershed as well, because of how much snow was left.
And it was a cold, a cold spring.
That's true.
A lot of melt.
Yeah. And it's been a most, well, it was summer, I remember saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's really nice.
Way to go, Steve.
Now, I think the weather will reset the rest of the year.
Ouch.
All right, I think that's our information reports.
Okay, well, all in all, I'm grateful we're not in Texas. It's a hundred and five, or whatever it is.
Back where I came from in Southern California, it's, it's been, it's been a pretty warm summer.
Phoenix, right?
Really? That was good.
No, thank you. Anyway, um. Anything else under information reports? We've pretty much got it, okay. Uh, action items, review of current and future water seasons?
So, um, this is kind of a, a standing item that we keep here, just in case there's anything that we need to discuss. As of right now, there is real no changes to the current water season. I think in the future, we're gonna reassess again. Um, we'll probably go back to, uh, the May timeframe. We shouldn't have as many issues in the upper country this year, which posed the biggest threat to having us start later. Um, depending on how much rain we get, obviously we'll reassess. As of right now, there is no updates on this item, no action. Um, and so unless there's any questions on, on our, or thoughts on current or future water seasons, we can, we can move on.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what discussion, what is the outlook for being like six month water season? Because, you know, the fire season, it's, I mean, it's two ends that we're talking about, not this one.
Yeah, so that is definitely something that we can, um, readdress. Um, that has been part of this discussion for this. And so if we come into the February meeting where we kind of start to look at that, then I would say we pose it at that point. And that would give us the chance of seeing how the winter has been, how much water we have in the system. And then we can assess whether a six month season is going to be something we want to do. The issue with that is we have to make sure that everybody who is a customer understands that that's an extra month of payment. And so that does cost, that is a cost that is going to be incurred without the citizens of the community.
And then also that, um, application, they're doing what, March first?
Yes. Yes, at least.
And isn't there a, a program that we're gonna start opening up inches to other people, to current customers or whatever?
Correct, which I.
That takes it into account too.
Correct. So we, yeah, we want to maximize the amount of inches we're selling to the entire community so that we can, uh, kind of gain back some of the water that we, the salesmen cost.
Right. Yeah, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, for the vineyard, the decision, this is a decision much earlier, because we were late getting started. And the plants were really happy. And then it was such a, um, it's a late season, everything in the state is two to three weeks behind. So it's kind of nice to move a little bit longer. I don't know that we need it, but it's really nice to have it there if we do need it. Because we haven't even started either still. And normally we've started, uh, a week ago.
Oh, that's great feedback.
Yeah, so it, this year's decision, you never know, right?
Yeah. So, concern like that.
A fellow came in and wasn't cursing us, but saying, how come I don't have water?
Well, it was pretty well advertised.
Yeah, it was, the decision was made to shift it all. Be able to, but what may, yeah, well, that's the thing, when, and when it's. Even stretch it further than we do.
Yeah.
You know, because if you don't have irrigation water, or if you got trees or whatever, pasture, if you don't have rain, I'm gonna lose some stuff.
Yeah, we had that, that kind of week of rain in May this year, which also was very helpful, so.
He's everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, uh.
So I have a, I don't know if they, they'll go on the other agenda, agenda for later. Um, but we were supposed to have had some information come back on, uh, the policy of offering more, uh, offering the other water to, if there's so many inches left to other, to the existing customers, that was supposed to come back.
So that's in, that's in the policy. We're, we're talking about the, we're gonna talk about priorities. Are, are, are you talking about the, how we're gonna advertise it or the priority?
All the above. Because we were supposed to have paperwork come through of how it was gonna advertise out. And we were gonna also have it in our policy, which I, I didn't see it in there. Um, we're also, we're talking about, uh, looking into who could have access for some, uh, having water more than the, the five months and be selling off our water from, you know, the, uh, overflow out of Stumpy during the winter. You know, which ones could be done, which ones.
Still developing the survey to, to, to do that information, so we haven't had a chance to send that out.
Do we have a date?
Um, I, I've kind of waited till the season is over so that we have more attention, I guess, from those folks. So yes, we will, I can bring something back next month if you feel comfortable with that. Would you like to have it next month, the, the survey?
If you can, that would be. Look, I'm, I'm only, I'm working over here, so whatever you guys want.
So we, we will develop a survey and we can determine how to send that out and to. So we've done some preliminary analysis of, of whether or not a sixty-three sixty-five water year would work. And so our, our thought is it would work in some areas and, and in other areas not. And that's part of the problem is, um, some of the areas where it's been requested is outside of the areas that we may be able to provide this. And so we're trying to figure out what a solution to that problem may be. So, um, that is definitely something that we will bring back in the next meeting.
Five people have requested year-round irrigation?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, really.
Why?
Uh, because.
What do we, uh, the reason?
Like bootstrapped farm, they are growing in greenhouses all year long.
Oh, I see.
And so like they're looking for full-time water.
That makes sense.
Um, which I never thought about until Pete, the gentleman came in and, and gave us a little, uh, public forum. And I was like, why not? You know, if he's in the right area.
Okay.
It's income, you know?
Especially where you're gonna kick water down to the treatment plant, or the trails. You got a ditch running, somebody wants some water, what the heck?
That, and that's our thought process. We may or may not be able to, to utilize it if it's before the treatment plant, um, you know, up country of the treatment plant.
Yeah.
Anytime we get below that treatment plant, we start to run into issues of, of keeping those ditches flowing, which is not always something that we can do in the winter time.
Right.
Because we don't have anywhere to put the water if somebody doesn't want it.
You better kick the waste gates out, if you get heavy rain, you'll blow ditch.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else? Not, then we'll go on to the historic irrigation ordinance.
Okay, so I'll address the comment that was just made by the director. So I have come up with some ideas for new priorities. So when we get to that section of the ordinance, I will, um, lay out
Okay.
The, the next priority that I have in mind about this, to go. So there was some things that got, uh, changed from the last time that we'll go over. That was just a few small changes from staff, um, that we wanted to make sure they got approved by the committee before we went forward. So I think part of it, the statutes are in blue, right?
Okay.
So in the definition of unadjudicated prescribed easement, we changed it very slightly to twenty-five foot area centered along the centerline of the raw water conveyance system.
I think part of that too was that, that change we would, we mentioned twenty-five foot easement throughout, so part of it was like more per due.
Yeah, we, we removed it from other areas of the ordinance, so it's only in the definitions and not in the rest of the ordinance. So like in, uh, just including, uh, section two H, it's removed, and you can see it's red line.
I thought there was another place where it didn't mention just about it.
Uh, we did change the, uh, definition of what irrigation service account tracked with the district that is processed by district staff and approved by the board. It appears in association with the required annual application. And so you can see what it used to be was a count established by annual application processed by district staff and approved by board directors. So light change there, doesn't really, it just kind of cleans up the language there for us.
Yeah.
Um, under H, so we added the words, um, easements. So ditch tenders and other agents of the district shall have access to the right and right of entry to the easement and all land irrigated from its water system. So all we do is add the easement so that we can, uh, clear that up.
Do we want to have ditch tenders and not, uh, uh, leave it as a, um?
Staff.
Staff, yeah, or something of, um.
Maintenance?
Well, it's usually they sweep off that it's a general manager and a, and a, and.
Designations.
Designating and designated staff.
However, whatever language you guys all with.
Because, because you don't want it just a ditch tender, because.
Well, she's dad, we got a good idea.
Authorized same. Uh, water district employees.
Yeah, G, G five.
So something more general that would.
Yeah.
Move everybody.
Yeah. That means you aren't able to go on them.
No, I'm an agent of the district.
So agents kind of includes everybody.
Ditch tender and other.
I think the ditch tender needs to go away.
Yeah.
So you want to just call district staff?
Except what happens, sorry, I'm sure, do you ever outsells? Would you have an?
I think you'd always have a district staff number with you.
The agents of the district, that would be like, through you and a model of you or something, that would be agent of the district.
Yeah, so capable of agent and then perhaps.
And like you have contractors running around?
Yeah, that's what we're saying, that would be the agent.
Yeah.
So we could say there's a district staff and other agents of the district, because you like.
Why don't you notice? If you're having an outside contractor.
That's what I was thinking.
Come on, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with you guys coming on and looking at ditch and doing all that kind of stuff. But if it's a different agency coming for a different purpose.
I think in that situation, we would notify you, I don't.
Well, think and in the ordinance or two of the things.
Yeah, you gotta have it in black and white.
Yeah.
Or you're going to.
How, however you like.
Support all your, your contractors.
Most of, most typically we do.
Most of it, not every time though, like sometimes they do like a longer review, it takes them like, you know, six hours, something like.
That guy that was running around.
We're not necessarily there all the, all the time. So, um, I mean, yeah, yes, we, I mean, it's, they're, they're, we're hiring them because they're, they're professionals. They're doing a professional job to support us, so we don't necessarily always out there with them.
Right, we just want to have a, a term there that encompasses everybody. So you're not gonna have somebody calling the cops and saying, I don't know who the hell this guy is, he has no ID. Whatever, and he's not a district employee.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be the least of their problems, calling the cops, it's like, uh-huh, lock and load in, identify yourself now.
Yeah, and they, and they follow our safety protocol, so they have, you know, they would have our contact information, they would have that on, you know, that. They would just be think, think, lock it in the ditch.
I, I think how you would put that in here would almost open up more cans of worms than not.
District employees.
And having a, a note, notification or something, however you would like to put with notifications.
Oh, I'm not.
Appropriate notice.
I, I'm not saying that notification, did you say notification?
When, I said with appropriate notice.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, that I'm not sure how that would, how we would be able to.
It's, it's our easement too, like, you know, like, we can act as our easement. I mean, sometimes we might not be able to get notification out, put like, black and white, I mean.
In the heat of battle, you're out there.
That's not, that's not appropriate notice, that's an emergency, you would, you know, I mean.
But somebody could, somebody could argue that you didn't give us any notice that there was an emergency.
Somebody could also argue that there's people running around the property that aren't a district employee.
Sure, and, but they would be agents of the district, as long as that person could prove, and they would have something from us to show that they're working for us. I, 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 I think it's, it's hard to open up that kind of can of worms. So I'm not sure how you would close that loophole out as well.
If you skip, yeah, go ahead.
Please make sure that whatever you decide to call them, it's consistent with what their job description is under the MOU. With the unions.
So district staff, that's.
Memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, if we said district staff, I think that encompasses all.
Because I don't want a ditch tender to be asked to do something else that's outside of the contract.
Sure.
Just, just make sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, um, do we want to add anything else here, um, committee-wise, besides changing the word ditch tender to district staff? So on the letter L, we have, um, so all we had to add for domesticated animals, and so this is property owner reliable for any damage to livestock or pro- domesticated animals. We've, uh, made that consisting of the rest of the, um, piece in the ordinance there, because it was talking about contamination from livestock or domesticated animals. In, in the priorities, I almost like to come back to this at the end, because I think it's gonna be a lengthy discussion. Would you guys be okay with that?
Which one?
Uh, come back to the section three, um, the priority section at the end, because I feel like it's gonna be a little more lengthy discussion as how we may finalize this. Are you guys okay with giving that and coming back to home? Okay, so section four, the distribution of water. Uh, historically, the irrigation scene then has been considered from May first through September thirtieth of each year. This constitutes a five-month time period in which irrigation water is delivered. However, the board of directors shall consider changes to the irrigation season to rep- respond to climatic and conditions. Y'all, so all we did was change a little of the language to, because we made the change. We wanted to, to make it so that it was a little more flexible, that it's kind of been historical, that this May first to September thirtieth. Oh, I'm sorry, section, section six, one page six.
Page six.
Obsession. I was like, that's a problem there.
All right, we're not here.
So you don't want me to say anything? It was a test.
Okay, so it's uh section four A, and all we did was kind of cleaned the language. If you want to read it, you're welcome to. Basically, it was shall generally be, and so we wanted it to be considered um and then with added the flexibility language. And do we have a problem with that?
Say uh we can miss an award there. Historically, the irrigation season has been considered from May one through September.
Of each year.
Yeah, that's fine.
This constitutes a five month period in which irrigation water is delivered. However, the board.
It just seemed like there might should be a to be from. The season has been considered to be from May one through September thirtieth, let's just.
If you want at that.
I I have I have no say. We're just here to throw wrenches in things.
If we leave it at that, can the irrigation board go in and set it like we did this year?
Correct, that's why it says, um the board of directors can consider changes to the irrigation season to respond to climatic conditions. So it still leaves the flexibility. All we do is change the kind of shale to be considered.
Good, cause that was a big deal this year.
Yeah, I know. Trust me, we heard all about it.
It was great.
Apparently, your grapes aren't doing very well, according to the public. So the horse's mouth doesn't really uh say it the the truth.
I need to say anything because uh we haven't started harvest yet, but I think this might be the highest quality year with it.
Could you say it a little louder?
With the, yeah, with with the water that we had and then the slightly cooler season, we're we're pretty excited.
Like in two thousand thirteen year, cause two thousand thirteen. It was a good year for California wine.
The biggest thing for us is those fires. Once those creeps get smoky, can't do anything about them. Yeah, can't get the smoke out of something about the fennel.
Trazen.
It's like bottom of an ashtray smell.
Okay, so we changed. I'm not, there's a little thought we added on C, I think. That's a big deal. When it's supposed to skip over to letter E. Interruptions to irrigation service due to the failure of the district works extend if when when interruptions to irrigation service due to failure of the district work extends beyond three consecutive business days. Proportion and adjustments for each water loss will be made. Number one, customer notification is received and verified by the district and number two interrupted or known by the district staff. So we're changing there is um from five days to three business days. So if you have a problem with your irrigation system and you let us know and after three days, we for some reason can't get it back on in three business days, then we start to owe you money. Are you okay with it? I I think this is about looking at that.
What's it going around when you don't? You've got it turned on and you want to turn it off? Can you still, can you get it turned off?
Unfortunately, no.
One more question, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you know the pressure that these systems are regular water supply, the like a trailer park that I run there.
Is it treated or or not raw? It has to be a minimum of twenty pounds. That's fire flow.
We just had really low pressure the last two weeks.
If you let us know, we would be happy to come up and test to make sure that nothing wrong.
Okay, I called in and nobody came out, but I was calling in.
Yeah, actually, I can put my guy right on right now. So I'll have him, I'll have him checking with you. I recall. We'll be out there tomorrow or Sunday. Okay, so moving on to page seven, we all have page seven. Uh uh letter J, uh we just removed um the ability to do the half a minor's inch in the, because it's just very hard to meter and you get that small. So we just removed that language. Okay with that? Going on to section five and page eight. On letter F, yeah, the district will actively market available water and develop waitlist to grow irrigation service. Did we lose another page?
You were trying to tell me something. I don't know.
I don't know.
Doesn't look right, but it might be.
I just made it maybe.
I'm sorry?
I was asking Fran if waitlist was one word.
Oh, waitlist is one word. The district will actively market available water and develop a waitlist to grow irrigation service accounts. Uh this is the change is current contractual customers will be given priority over new and waitlist customers. So this is part of the conversation I want to have over priority. And so I'll bring up my stuff. So we don't have to agree to this just yet. But um I'm hoping that you see what my thought process is when we get to priority. Um and so section six is um the district reserves the right to pursue pursue additional revenue through additional irrigation water sales. This can be done through an extended delivery timeframes or by other means. These sales may be limited in availability, service areas and duration. So that's kind of our uh other duty that apply um in this catchall. So we can deliver water to certain areas if the district deems it's uh feasible. This would be kind of the conversation if it's above um sweetwater treatment plant, or if if we want to extend the season, if you want to do a three sixty five season, there's a whole bunch of of kind of gray area that we can cover within this topic.
The man should be taken out before extended, if you added S to frame.
Through an extended delivery.
Need S is deleting.
Yes, is deleted.
That comes out?
Yeah, that's crossed out. It's got a little strike through in the middle.
It's a fine print.
It's actually not our fund, it's Microsoft, and so we defer to Microsoft. And then uh the the word superseded, we actually verified that that was spelled correctly. Cause we uh we all kind of questioned ourselves.
I was saying waitlist as one word.
Why is waitlist is not a word?
No, it's the first time I've ever seen it as one word.
Looking up, see what Google says. Cause Google knows everything. Yeah, it's all, it's one word. Where does it say waitlisted? Yeah, waitlisted means that the admin admissions office has reviewed your college application. It's all on here. There's no space. So I think the 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 Google does it okay.
Going with it.
So we can go back, I know.
Let's add ask for Google.
Four days, I'm seeing that something she wants to talk about, but I wanted to talk about priorities. One of my thoughts was to add a fourth priority. And so number one priority is, we obviously have people who are current customers and we're not changing that. And so if you're a current customer, you will remain priority one and then you will be able to maintain your service. I'm on page five, I apologize, the top of page five. So priority two currently sits at applications for irrigation service of parcels with the most recent active irrigation service. Within the previous, it was ten, I think five. So if you've had five, if you if you say you shut it off four years ago, you still have a priority to get water back before, say, a new customer. And then any new applications um after that. So my my thought process to encourage those folks who have uh raw water and who want to add inches was to add a priority kind of one B. And it would be if a current customer who wants to add inches, they would take priority over anybody who has not been a customer of us. Um oh, so 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 in between priority one and priority two, adding uh any current customer who is willing or wishing to add inches.
Why don't you just make it a or? Where it says during the or a customer who existing customer who wants to add inches. That encompasses both of them when it was paying priority.
Yeah, I think we can do that if the if the committee um agrees.
It's words, I think it's fine.
So basically, it's it's if you want to add irrigation inches, then you are falling under priority one. So if you already are a customer and you want to add more, um then we you have the ability under priority one.
So how would um how would you deal with um a customer that was a current customer that loved that bought a new piece of land and wanted to increase the water? Does that new piece of land count as a current customer? And we're not buying land, so I'm not asking. Just in case it comes up, right? They buy the neighbor's land, they want more water. And where would that lie? Is that is a is a likely chance that's going to happen?
Yeah, I would say that that would fall under that. Cause I would say if it's an adjacent piece of land, then it would, it could be the same customer. If it's a, if it's a not a congruent piece of land, you buy something somewhere completely different, then it would be two separate accounts.
Is it going to be fed from the same service, same connection?
I I don't know. I'm just like if, you know, people in district buy more grass for their cows and they want some extra irrigated land.
Or you don't want somebody moving in next door, so you buy the property next door.
Yeah, it's kind of have.
That's what I did.
Making sure you know where you slot them in, so it's consistent.
Yeah, if it's a, if it that parcel was a current irrigation service and then that land sold and then it would, that would grandfather.
That makes sense.
But if it's a land that hasn't been developed with irrigation account, that'd be a new account.
But if it's a current customer who wants to increase their inches, I think it would still be a current customer, ways to increase their inches.
Yeah, make it a bit of priority.
Yeah, yeah, this they get, they would get priority over those folks who have not been a customer within the last.
Adam said, if it's if someone's buying a piece of property that does not have irrigation on it and it's the same customer. Can use me as an example. I have I have two inches on one property, I have no inches on the other piece of property. They're separate parcels. So that would mean if I'm going to put irrigation as irrigation service on this property, then that's a new customer.
You're a current customer that wants to, are you making a new connection?
It would be a new connection.
Then you're, then you have two accounts.
So that's what I'm saying, separating that. If I'm just, if I'm going from two to four inches on mine and shoving it into the other property, that's different. But if I'm going and having this other piece of property with a new connection, then that is a new customer.
If you have a box, it's based on how many connections you have into our system. That's if you're a new customer or not. So if you have more. You still, you still have of your own box at your house. There's one main box, there's still nine boxes. And so that's that, each one of those boxes is a customer. And so if you added a box, that would be a new customer box. So yes. Does that answer for that? Do you think that clears it up? Have any other changes? These are the same changes that were, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. You wanted to add in something to the effect of um forgive me for having a little bit of a brain fart. But you did say.
One, we have to run this thing twenty four seven and there's nothing to tell anybody that you can get in trouble if you don't run it twenty four seven. As we know, they just turn it off and on. When it's hot, they turn it on. When it's not hot, they turn it off and the overflows and the rest of us either get these variation. So somehow uh and that may be something with some of this other information where if you damage, it's a violation, or if you let your cows get in there and do something, it's a violation. Right, but but this is not where if you turn your water off and on intermittently when you're supposed to be running it twenty four seven, there's nothing in there saying you to do that.
So under section four, letter C. It's uh water is district using under continuous flow. Water shall be used continuously during all days and nights, including holidays and Sundays, and no allowances shall be made for failure to use water on page six, sorry. Failure to use water on schedule shall not entitle the customer to any rebate. The district will make all reasonable attempts to notify customers of any outages for both emergency and non-emergency purposes. If you'd like to, we can add a sentence in there and it doesn't necessarily have teeth until we put teeth to it. That you says um failure to use water on schedule shall not entitle the customer to any rebate. Additionally, uh uh failure to not comply with the continuous flow regulations could result in penalties from the district.
I think you need you need something like that because what happens to you in a true ditch is somebody will turn it off. The ditch tender will come along and he'll 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 cut the flow down. And then everybody else is taking it, using it every day. Has a has a glitch for two days.
Yeah, I understand. So so.
But would it make it where it's a little more so I'm saying can sever, we will sever service. You will, because there should be something.
The penalty could be that they lose service. That's what I'm saying. If you use the word penalty.
Unless you fight district or something.
Or or penalty.
Penalty shall, you know, be up to and including.
Okay, so so additionally, is the word will be addition, please.
Money talks.
Any service that does not comply with the continue and to uh continue us low requirement could be penalized.
Could result in.
By the district up to. What was your language there?
Up to and including.
Up to and including termination of service.
I mean, there's a cost to sending a ditch tender out too, right?
So we're gonna, we we can develop fees and that's why I'm saying the penalties. So penalized by the district could be you pay money. Uh it could be that you lose your service, whatever, you know, you got.
You have to, yeah, cause that's what you want it to be worse than what they'll probably get, but at least have something in there that says you you're required to do this and you need to keep, you know, keep it on twenty four seven. This changes out there all the time.
Don't you have to spell out what what the penalty is going to be?
We can penalize them in a in a, it's a policy, not a not a ordinance.
I think one more.
Develop fees.
What in there is, if they have a pipe break and it's flooding their yard or flooding their place that if they notify the district that they're going to go turn their box off to make repairs.
That's different. That's different because I like, can I use you as an example? So Director Seaman actually had that happen. She had some some breaks, so she asked us to come turn her box off. We turned her box off. She doesn't get in trouble for that. But if you are doing it by yourself, because you're not supposed to touch it. You are, you are not supposed to touch it. The district is supposed to do it for you. It's just like if you have treated water service, you are not allowed to touch the meter on our side of the meter. You you can touch your shut off valve. But if you touch ours and break ours, it's your responsibility to still fix it. You are liable if you touch ours. So so I'm gonna add this in um letter C, right before the red the the district. So right before that additionally. So, so I'm gonna add this in, um, letter C, right before the red the, the district, so right before that, additionally. Any service that does not comply with the continuous flow requirement, required, requirement, excuse me, could be penalized by the district up to and including. The termination of service. Is that what you guys would like to have added?
Yeah.
Yes, that's good, yeah.
Okay.
I have another hour.
Yes.
I've been, I've made comments all the way through, um, then I'm going back to page four, inception two, item.
Hold on, let me find that, page four. Section, I got, page four?
Page four, section two P. All district improvements to the account follow federal, state, and local regulations. I would like to say all district repair, count on maintenance, comma, and improvements, because those three things have different meaning.
Yeah, fine, what was the word you wanted to add?
Repairs, maintenance, and improvements.
Okay, any other changes, addresses, anything else you wanna add?
No.
Uncomfortable. Okay, yes.
Uh, I, perhaps, uh, because I, I'm on Fresh Bunny in Garden Valley. I never, never knew we were supposed to keep the water running all the time, it runs most of the time at my place. But sometimes I don't wanna deal with it and I'll turn it off and I didn't never know. Is it on the application? Oh, I was just gonna say, put it on the application. Carla Sutton, please read. Okay, that's it.
Turn off your irrigate.
No, for Sutton's language, exactly, thank you. I didn't realize.
Anything else, or would we be okay with making a motion for this on the board for approval? Oh, I apologize, um, we do have a comment from online, um, Mr. uh, uh, Karen Griffiths, I believe that is Sheree. Sheree, I think you can go ahead. She's not muted. Sheree, can you hear? Oh, is the TV loud enough? Sheree, I don't know if you can hear us, but you, now you went on mute, there you go, you're muted now, can you try to talk now? Yeah, unfortunately, if you're talking, we are not able to hear you, I apologize.
She's small.
That'd be the one thing to do.
Sheree, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Dowd is going to give you a call to make your comment.
Anyone to talk to you?
I just tapped.
When we go out and call her.
We'll get a commander.
Here, how you doing?
Uh, nothing surprises me up here. Yeah, go ahead and talk.
But aren't you here?
No, not here. There you go. You're on, go ahead.
It will be.
Some day if somebody ever sues, so my suggestion is make sure.
Yes, thank you for that suggestion, it will be submitted to legal as soon as these changes are made and then when it becomes, when it comes to the board. Legal will have put a review on it. Thank you for that, very good suggestion.
He invited us all.
So are we ready?
We had one.
No.
Have a question. Oh, it's a question on page five of the. Partial. Number of.
For I, that's about a letter.
It used to be H.
Letter I? Yes.
It says new applications for out of district irrigation service accounts will not be approved. By the Board of Directors.
Yeah, so there was a time. There was the ability to have someone who's not within the district, if they're in the upper country. Um, that could tap into our canal and there are some still that are grandfathered in. But if you drop off, you are not allowed back, well, because we are, it is against law enforcement.
So out of district could also be. Um, someone that doesn't have. Current potable water.
So, so in that situation, they would have to be annexed in utilizing the LAFCO process, there's a, there's a whole process that we.
Well, I mean, someone like, say, I don't know, uh, somebody in, uh, Garden Valley or something that's has.
No, they'd be in our boundary.
They're above, these ones, they're, they're talking about above our treated water supply.
If you look at our boundary, our actual legal boundary, it follows the canal.
Right.
And in certain areas, the, the houses that are associated are not. Within our boundary, it's a, so like Stumpy is our legal boundary and then it kind of goes down to just our canal. And there's little areas where it opens up and then it little areas it closes down. And so there are people who still get access to, to the canal that are not legally within our boundary. But it's because they got access to the service at a certain timeframe. Now, if those properties sold and anybody at those properties were to lapse their irrigation. At any point when it lapses, we cannot let them back on the system. It's a legal requirement, I'm sorry.
They're not year round, no.
No, they would, and they would have to, to get back into the system, they would have to get, um. Uh, annexed into the district, so they would have to actually come and it'd be a vote and. Probably would, we would probably let them in, but it would be a process.
Like a handful.
I would, yeah, Adam would probably have a better idea as how many.
Yeah, handful.
But like, say they want, say somebody fell off and they, oh my gosh, I fell off, I wanted to come back in, it's part of the process of it to come back in legally as opposed to just. Making the five members of the board say yes, it has to be, um, through the LAFCO. As long as they send the application every year, they stay current, the year that they stop, then they are not current anymore and they lose it. So it's kind of a, don't forget to send in your application. It's just for those, those specific ones, that's more of an issue.
Thank you, that was just a clarification.
Okay, so, um, pending legal review, uh, we'll send this to the board. Uh, if that's okay with all of you, but I would like a motion. Um, and, and a vote from the committee just for that recommendation, if you all are.
So the action is submit final recommendation to the Board of Directors for approval.
I'm planning legal review.
And the.
And changes.
Well, yeah, with, with the changes that we discussed.
Okay. But, I mean, before this, it wasn't final, now it's final.
Yeah, we did, it's final.
Alright, so, uh, do we have a motion to submit? The final recommendations of the Board of Directors for approval.
I move we submit the, we approve the ordinance as a, whatever. And submit it to the board pending legal to the Board of Directors. Second.
Okay, motion and then second to, um, submit the final recommendations to the Board of Directors, are all those in favor, say are. Are opposed?
Yeah, we did it.
I know it's. Say thank you. And then redoing this, because we did have a few changes in, in the staff. And so, you know, just kind of reach out to all the committee members and, and don't think I'm not talking to you, cuz you're sitting back there. But I would like to thank all the committee members for the hard work, cuz this has been, I, do you know what today is, by the way?
Nineteenth September.
And you know why that's a special day for this district?
It was the day before my husband was born.
And so, yes, this is the first day we were able to come back after the fire, so, and my birthday was on Saturday, so I, I turned forty. So, uh, basically, it's, this has been a year process of getting this to go and I, I really appreciate the, the committee for all your hard work and. And also the, the citizens and the community, so I, I wanna thank everybody for their input on this ordinance, hopefully the board sees the same thing.
And I'm so happy you guys are, we have a voice at the table now, you're, you're agreed.
Okay, so I think we have committee member comments and reports, and I would just like to interject really quick if it will please the chair. I forgot to make an announcement during the informational reports. We have been advertising for the open seat that we have on the irrigation committee, so we do have one seat, you'll notice there are six of you, seven seats total. So we have in, uh, advertised in both the Gazette, the Facebook. Our website, I think we're looking pretty well everywhere for a seventh committee member. We do have a couple who have expressed interest, so we're vetting them through the system currently now. Um, and we will bring them to the, the board meeting when, when appropriate. To, to, to bring to this committee, so I just wanted to make that an announcement.
Okay, thank you. So irrigation committee member comments and reports, anyone have any comments or reports?
Did you have a, did you have something?
I, I'm up to the agenda items for next.
So agenda items for next irrigation committee meeting, you have something, please.
I, I would like to recommend, and you guys have to decide, um, that. We will start seeing some of the information changes for the, um, uh, applications. Um. Possibly the ca- uh, statement of the notification to property owners along the ditch of the twenty-five. Foot center line, um, cuz that's kind of important, cuz. Most of them probably don't realize that. That's kind of important to go out there, um, and you were going to come back with the settling of water and overflows. And, um, policy on offering water to other customers. In that three hundred and sixty-five day or whatever we can get away with.
We're working on some, a lot of that, so that's, a lot of that survey will be part of that. Um, so we'll send that out to the community. Um, not sure how exactly yet, but we'll come up with some metric or methodology to send that survey out.
Yeah, cuz we also were talking, you know, like, what we found about the twenty-four seven here.
Yeah.
Uh, that isn't twenty-four seventy.
Well, I think.
I am now.
Uh, I think we need to, yeah, and I mean, this has been a good education for everybody.
No, no. Since being on the committee, uh, uh, yeah, and it was, and I'm like. Yeah, so.
Some people just never quite get it, but it would be nice to have, uh, like what you talked about in the beginning, some kind of a flyer. Of information, your requirement as an irrigation customer, these are what you're going to comply with. And we probably should start it sooner than later, so then by.
Wait till it passes first. Yeah, once this becomes finalized, we can send this out.
No, 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 the, the propaganda to go out to the customer. I, the information that goes out to the customer.
Not even a member of the committee.
I, that's why I'm only making the donation now for an agenda item. That we start it now, rather than wait until the scurry in January when the applications are going out, we need. The information that's gonna go out with the application and the updated application needs to be done before January first. So we need to get that on the agenda sooner than later.
So, uh.
That's my recommendation.
I, I think that we can bring that back at the next meeting, so we're, we're already talking about the survey. And we can bring the flyering and we can bring back the letter. Um, so all this, correct Liz, gather all of the documentation that goes out. Once this ordinance is approved, if, if it pleases the board, we can send it out to the customers and they can have a copy of the ordinance, whether they read it or not is up to them. But at least we'll do our due diligence, like, uh, uh, you know, credit card company that tells you that they send you eighteen thousand pages and so. Will, uh, will at least send it out that they can, they should read it, if they don't, then that's kind of on the.
But some of it is, we need to highlight.
Bullets, bullets.
So, or. You know, the twenty-four seven, the fact that you can, if you don't have twenty-four seven, you could be, you know, maybe that needs to be quoted specifically.
That's what we're saying, when we, when we can bring the flyering back, we'll, you guys can pick what is the, what is the hot topics that you want to include. But I'm saying, if, once this is a route by the board, if it pleases the board. We can send this out to all the customers, when we do like applications, when we send out the application notices, we can send out the ordinance for all those customers. So they can read it as a, like a, the credit card stuff.
Would you wanna do something like, uh, they have to sign a thing saying they read and understand it? When they do the application?
That's fine, we could, well, we can put that in the application, that you understand the ordinance. Remember, yeah.
You have read and understand.
You have read and understand the.
So that's good for the committee to add to the flyering into the application, we'll bring all that. And we'll go over, we'll have a, a kind of a roundtable meeting with all the flyering and all the documentation at the next meeting.
I was thinking, you know, Ray, you've been, uh, our chairman for all this time, are you still good with it? I, do you have to put that on agenda, discuss, like, uh, are you ready for a rotate around?
I, I don't care though, I, I mean.
I don't know if we have to discuss that or if that's.
My only job is to run this meeting every.
Month, when we drag you in.
It is every, it's like every. But four or five times a year, really.
We get six times a year with me, right?
Okay, six times, whatever, but I, I don't care, doesn't matter.
Okay.
If someone else would like to do it.
You're good, I'm good, I just was going to offer like, yeah, I could. Discuss, say, you don't put that on and discuss it next time, okay, perfect.
A couple of months ago, we were waiting for some information from the state regarding water. And the right, the, the, where it goes, I wasn't clear what we were, what the state was going to say.
All the water rights.
Yeah.
The nineteen fifteen, nineteen fourteen, whatever.
Stuff pretty well died, so we are good for right now.
Oh, good.
And we have lots of rain and it goes away.
Kind of sorta, they, uh, the wire, it, it pushed really, really, really. And so we're coming up with our own kind of talking points and how we want to address the situation. So yes, that is an issue that we will have coming up in the future, but not right now.
Okay, good.
Anything else?
Did you, uh, they put on the agenda?
Oh, no, I, I don't think we need to.
Okay. I think the chairperson and the vice chair were okay with remaining in their roles is what they will say, so unless somebody else wants to take over.
Wonderful job, I wouldn't wanna interrupt you. Uh, agenda items for next irrigation meeting?
That's what I gave them.
Hearing none, um, the next meeting date and adjournment, uh, next year, regular irrigation committee meeting is October nineteenth.
So I have an issue with the date. I will let you know the date, but the issue is, that's the date of the fall plenary for, um. A, 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 W, A, so I will not be able to attend this meeting. Um, if you would like to continue this meeting, um, we can designate somebody or we can reschedule it. But we can do that offline, I just wanna let you.
Seventeenth might be a, I'd be fine with that.
Seventeenth. Yeah, two o'clock would be fine with me, if any, if everybody is, is okay with that, we can, uh, send out emails, I can't do it, we cannot do it in here. We will have to do it offline. So, I cannot, we cannot reset a date in here, we have to do it offline.
Offline.
Outside of the meeting. So I will have Liz reach out to all you directors.
Okay, anything else?
Make sure you use the word.